We're at the Hamlin County Department of Education. Oh glory is finding the breeze. It's January 21st, 3:45 PM. We are going to go into the Hamlin County Department of Education. And we are going to make a record request. I've never requested any records from the school board. Kind of tried to leave them alone. Um, I mean, there's really, they do a pretty good job. Um, but there are a few things that have been brought up to my point and attention. And I have been in here once and spoke about it. He told me to bring it up with uh, the principal directly at the school and I did and it worked out really, really well. Um, my request for today, um, for the Hamlin County School Board is um, I would like to know the regulations or the policy that's regarding changing the hours of the school. And the reason for this is because Hillcrest Elementary School used to start at eight o'clock, 7:55, eight o'clock. Now it starts at 7:40. And the problem with that is, is that with the COVID, they don't go through the line quick enough to get the kids out of the vehicles in order to not let people late. And a lot of times they'll walk right in. At that time, no matter if there's somebody pulling up or not, once it's the time, it's the time and they cut it and they're gone. Um, meanwhile, the difference in time means that I've got to take my oldest son, whom goes to Meadowview Middle, and he's got to either hang out with me or his mother for some time before we actually drop him off. Or we end up dropping him off and he's got to hang out a little bit. With this COVID, I don't want him walking around being more exposed. You never know. I mean, the less time there, the better. So um, I've talked into a couple of people and they, they um, they've voiced their opinions on this um, of what the time is. And they changed the time like the second week of school. My next uh, request for the school board is I want to know the Tennessee statute that no restaurant food is permitted by a student and the exemptions for the faculty. Now, I've always known that you shouldn't bring in things and so on and so forth. Because some underprivileged may not get that or something along those lines. Um, and I understand that, but when the faculty has the McDonald's cups and the Subway cups and the this and the that, you know, the kids still see that and the kids still want that. So I brought it up today, um, when I dropped off my son this morning. And um, the person whom I spoke to, which I'm not going to relay any information, um, just in case she is wrong. Um, and if she's right, so be it. Hopefully, you know, she's educated in it. But she told me that it was a state law that no fast food or restaurant food is to be on the premises from the students. And that if they were caught, that they would lose funding. And that um, it would be a violation on them. So I'm just curious, is that a state law that food from a restaurant is not allowed? Must stop in lobby for temperature check. Face coverings are required to enter the building. Once again, we ain't gonna do that. So let's go. Yeah, I need to make a records request, please. Um, so for some records that are available to public records?
Well, we don't keep permanent records.
Not permanent, I, public records.
We don't keep public records here. This is a school board.
I know. So I've got, I've got records that have to do with the school board. And the Hamlin County told me to come here because you guys.
It's to do with the school board?
Yeah.
So are you here for company or?
No, I'm individual. I like all the plants that they have in here. Believe it or not, it probably uh.
Do you care if I ask your nine points up?
Yeah, I do. I'd rather not give it. But uh, they probably actually filter out a lot of air to where it's much cleaner in here. So I guess we are waiting for somebody to come to fulfill this request. Stop the spread of germs. You know, I've never gotten that whole six feet deal. Those Germans don't know what six foot one is. That's just ridiculous. And then to wear a mask. I mean, there's no regulation on a mask. You could wear a fricking pair of underwear with holes in them. As long as it looks like you got something there, people seem to be okay with it. Like those underwear are gonna stop a virus from penetrating and you getting it. But hey, if you have medical issues, wear a mask. Take whatever precautions you can. I personally still lick my fingers when I eat. I'm not worried about the coronavirus.
Sir?
Yes?
He's gonna say Dr. Davisian, and then we got it.
Alright, thank you. I'll go ahead and pause this for you. I don't want to keep you guys on the hook. I don't know, could take them 30 seconds, could take them five minutes, 10 minutes. They might be in a meeting, I have no idea. So I'll pause this and as soon as I see him walking down this hallway here, we'll go ahead and start it back up. Officer Perry, how you doing?
I'm doing well. I'm trained. Go ahead and sit. I'll sit over here.
Alright. I need to make a records we- request.
Okay.
Um, I would like to know the regulation or the policy that you all have um, regarding changing the hours of school. Um, more in particular, Hillcrest that used to start at 7:40 or, I'm sorry, 8, 7:50 or 8 o'clock and now starts at 7:40. Um, I've spoken to a lot of the parents um, that have received notices stating that their kids have too many parties. Um, the line to get in there i- is hard. It's harder than your middle schools or your high school, right? Because the little kids take longer to get out of the vehicle, okay? So when you have the same amount of people taking temperatures as you do in the middle school, the middle school is gonna run a lot faster, right? So I've got the choice of whether or not I try to bring my kids right at the skin of time. So that when I bring my child that goes to Meadowview, he's not there wandering around for 15, 20 minutes possibly catching the Corona, right? So the less time he's in school, the less chances there are of contact. Um, surprisingly though, there hasn't been that kind of outbreak in the schools, which is a great thing. It's really impressive to me. Um, you know, I would be expecting a lot more phone calls every, on a regular basis. Hey, this student, you know, this grade level, that grade level. And then God, it hasn't happened like that. That's, that's a fabulous thing. Cause it, that would be devastating. Um, but if you have any policy or anything on that, because that time was actually changed like two weeks after the start time, the start date, right? So I'm sure that there's some way somehow that they might not have been done.
And I'm trying to think, I am not sure. We do not have, I'm almost confident, we don't have school board policy that dictates when a school starts and when it ends. Uh, you know, we're required by law to have a certain number of hours each day.
Right.
But we normally don't set the hours at this level. But what ends up happening a lot of times is our buses are gonna serve three different schools.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we try to get the time so that they accommodate, you know, that delivery and pickup kind of thing. Because if everybody started at eight o'clock, there's no way that we can get on the buses.
Sure, I mean, because the one picks up, my neighbors are like six in the morning or whatever it is. I mean, it, it's dawn. Um, and I, I, we bring our kids to school in the morning because we don't want them on the bus for an hour or whatever prior to. Um.
So your question though is, is that you're concerned that the school is starting too early or starting too late?
Starting too early, right? Because you know, either one kid's gonna have a 15 minute window or, you know, instead of just going from one and going to the other, you know, it, it's a little bit simpler like that, right? Because we don't have to try to break down our time in such a wide gap. The other thing is, the same reason why you're wearing a mask is because of the CDC. The CDC has done um, background um, checks on timing. They, they say that the later a school can actually start, that it's better for the students, for the kid, not just.
I'll see you tomorrow. Have a good night.
Not just in his curriculum at school, but throughout the rest of the day. Um, and I've read a bunch of those reports. Um, you know, I don't know if you've found any of those. Now, we're only talking about 15 minutes. These other schools started at nine instead of at 7:45 or, you know, so I mean, they, an hour's a big difference. But any chance that a person doesn't have to run out of the house as quick, right? Um, because you've got one kid that's like, oh, well, I don't have to be there for 20 minutes. And the other ones have to hurry up and get there. And I'm dealing with four kids, right? So it's not easy to begin with.
And I tell you what, let me, I don't think it's school board policy to let them do it, because I don't think it's really.
I don't think there's anything either, but I'm masking.
Um, now, there's, there's a couple of things that you can do. One is you can just tell me and I'll go look and we'll probably get it to you. But I can tell you, if we do have any, it is not that strict. Cause it does not say that a school will start at this time. So um, the thing that I can do, if you'll leave me your name and number, then what I will do is I'll call Dr. Davis and kind of find out what the times actually are. Then you and I can talk later. But I do know that every one of our schools kind of have a different starting and ending time. And the reason for that is we gotta have staggered stops and starts so that our buses can get to each one of those schools at the different times.
Sure. I've lived here for 13 years and Hillcrest has always started at the same time other than this year.
What time do they start for last year?
I think it was seven uh, 7:55 or eight o'clock exactly. So we're talking about about a 15 minute difference. I mean, that's a big deal when you're talking that early in the morning with four kids and you got.
What time does that mean to you to start?
Eight o'clock.
Okay.
So what can we?
Let me write over what this says here. There, can I have this?
I'm gonna show everybody this sign I saw. Opportunity, there will always be opportunity where there is an open minded, willing hand. Um, I'll give you an email address. Um, I don't really answer the phone all that often in this way.
Watch over, you got it. I think it didn't work.
Lakeway Audits.
Lake? Lake Way? All right, it's all one word?
Yep, at gmail.com.
Okay, now, if I don't call you back um, tomorrow, if I don't email you back tomorrow, then you call me for something's wrong, I'll write it down or whatever. But just Lakeway A U D I T S.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, at gmail.com. Um, yeah.
And, and your name?
My name's Tony.
Tony, okay. T O N Y?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I've got, I, I, I actually got a, another question for you, maybe you can help me out with. Um, this morning, um, I, I know that restaurant food has always been frowned upon in the schools, right? And I, I know there's different reasons to do with, you know, kids that don't get those type of foods, can't afford those type of foods, so on and so forth. Um, this morning, um, we stopped at McDonald's before I dropped off my son because we had time to spare. And um, there was no traffic, so he still had most of his sweet tea left. And I asked a lady when we dropped him off, I said, is, will he have a problem if he brings his tea into the school and drinks it while he's walking to class? She said, she told me, and it caught me off guard, that it's actually against the law in that the school receives funding and they can be cited or lose their funding or something along that. Can you enlighten me a little bit on that?
What happens with that is that if they, if we sell or allow certain things to be sold or brought in during a federally funded breakfast program or lunch, then it can be some problems. So um, so now that may not apply to everything, it may not apply to your specific situation. But there are certain things because we receive federally. For example, we cannot have vending machines open during breakfast or lunch times. That's against the law. If we were, if we had an audit and, and they found us that kids were able to buy drinks or bringing uh, non-compliant beverages in, then they'd be a problem. Now, I don't know if that extends to people who themselves have them because if you put it in a lunchbox and put it in a furnace stove, then, you know, that's, that's not necessarily a problem. But I think the issue that we run into is that in most situations, we would not let a kid, you know, we, we try not to let kids bring McDonald's with them because then all the other kids that don't have it, that just creates problems. Now, if you're coming in for lunch and you said, I have a good taste, you know, 100% of it, then sometimes we'd be like, thank you guys, I needed you.
Yeah, I mean, because part, part of this whole COVID thing, I mean, we used to go and eat lunch with all of them as often as we possibly could. Um, and that was one of the things, you know, is that, you know, I don't want to eat the school food and I don't want to just sit there and, you know. So i- if we could bring something, that, that would be great. Um.
But now, just more, it's more of a practical sense of what you were talking about. If a kid doesn't have it in a sealed container, so it's just one of those cups. You know, oftentimes they got their book bag, they've got some other things that they bring them. They end up stealing it, it goes all over the place. At the middle school and high school level, uh, we don't allow, for a whole different reason. That we don't know what's in that cup, you know, that if you have anything, it's gotta be a clear container. We gotta be able to see it.
But my kids don't have clear containers for their, their drinking that they bring there. They're metal, they're, you guys can't see in them. I mean, you, you wouldn't know what's in there anyways. So I mean.
That, that is sealed, yeah.
No, it's not. Well, I mean, yeah, it closes the top. Um, but I mean, even like, you know, like you said, I, I can bring lunch and sit with them and bring it outside food. I was always told I couldn't, so I, I never really pushed it. But you know, then it all comes back to, you know, the faculty, right? They eat McDonald's, they eat Subway, they eat those different things. So they have those cups in the classroom where the kids can see it. So if a kid sees that and wants it from the teacher, eh, what's the difference? Basically, what you're saying is that a faculty has more rights in what they can eat and drink at school than what a child has.
Correct, it is true. Yeah, that, we, we uh, there are different standards for dogs. I mean, we can drive, you can do a lot of different things that kids can't do. Uh, and so there are different standards. But now, in terms of that, mainly what you're talking about, I would think, in your situation that you explained there, it's more just an issue of being mad. Uh, but uh, it's not, if you brought it into the lunchroom, that enacts a whole different sort of things. At high school and middle school level, I think most of our folks actually do say it's gotta be something we see, you know, into, so we can see, you know, what it is.
Okay, so can they bring things like that in a, another package? Or the wrapper turned inside out or something like that? Um, you know?
You know about in terms of just fast food?
Yeah.
Um, if you're gonna buy a McDonald's lunch or something of that, uh, what we would prefer you to do is that if you put it in a lunchbox, you know, then it's in a lunchbox and um, we just ask parents sometimes just to be considerate of other kids who may not have money to buy those things. And they may end up feeling bad when they're sitting there eating. And somebody brings out the chicken nuggets or brings out the Happy Meal. Now, we do ask folks, take out the toy, if there's a toy inside of it.
Sure, shouldn't be at school anyways.
That just creates a nightmare for us. But if you put it in a lunch bag and you put it in a furnace stove, you know, something that is sealable, closable, it doesn't create a mess. Normally, we're not gonna have an issue or problem with that. But we're not gonna sit at home and try to detect the parents before they put their lunch bag. Uh, so, but if it is a container like a cup, uh, milkshake, a tea, you know, Coke or something of that nature, then as those kids bring it into the classroom, as they're going down through the hallway, that could easily be spilled anywhere.
Sure, make a mask, sticky.
We just don't allow that period. So that's just.
It's more the food than the drinks. I mean, he just happened to have the rest of his large sweet tea and there was like another like eight minutes till the bell was gonna ring. And you know, if it wasn't cold, he probably would have stood outside and drank it. You know what I'm saying? Instead of going in. But that's why I wanted to ask and not put it upon him to, you know, to ask or to walk in.
There are federal requirements of when we're serving lunch, but that's a little bit different than what you're asking, I think. But what you're asking just comes down to good housekeeping. That if we allowed kids to bring in what they wanted to bring in, you know, just like in our auditoriums, we say, you know, you can't bring anything in but water in a sealed container. And so we sit out there often with people, no, that can't come in, no, that can't come in. Because you get tired of drinking it after a while, you sit down on the floor and you forget about it. And then you stand up and it's all over the place. And if we've got carpet, that's a problem. If it spills on the floor and it's got ice in it, then that's a hazard. And so it's just more of a safety thing than anything else.
Yeah, I mean, I agree on the drinks a hundred percent, you know. I mean, during a long-term school, you know, walking in, drinking it before the bell rings or whatever. But yeah, I mean, for sure keeping it all day long because there is no lid in it. A large drawing makes a big mess, you know. And it is hard to hold their backpacks and hold this and that and, and walk through. So yeah, um, I mean, my main focus was food. Now, you know.
Well, the food, the, the reason too on the food piece that we say is that we want it in a lunchbox, if you bring something outside where it's chicken nuggets, it's a hamburger, if you bring that into a third grade class or you bring that in on bus, then the first question every kid's gonna ask.
Can I have?
Can I have some of that? And then of course, you know, that's where we began to just have a ton of issues that kids start fighting over it. Kids will give one to one, but he won't give something to somebody else. And then um, and we don't, it's not just fast food kind of stuff, it's, it's everything. It's candy, it's chewing gum, you know, it's all those kinds of things that we really try to tell kids, if you bring something like that, keep it in your lunchbox, keep it in your backpack. Don't have it out there for, for display.
Well, you know, in return though, you all sell chips, you all sell ice cream. So there's kids that can't afford chips or ice cream. So I mean, it's the same boat, right? You, you got a kid that always has ice cream. Cause I know when we went, it was like the same kids, like every day, they had a bag of chips or they had ice cream, right? The same ones constantly, the other ones didn't. And a lot of kids, believe it or not, they would buy and they'd buy one for their friend and give it to their friend. Or when we would go, you know, we'd have four, five, six people at our table. We, we wouldn't just buy for our kid, we'd buy for all of them, right? So now you're talking about two different grade levels. Now we're buying you a dozen ice creams or chips at the end of the day, right?
And that does happen, but that, that is a situation in which some students do have access to that. And you know, sometimes it's, it's like when we have the school store, some people are able to buy their notebooks and pencil erasers. Uh, but you know, all that stuff, that, all that stuff is on the food list. So we actually have to go through a process of making sure that the things we sell has a certain content to it.
Sure.
So it's not, we can't just put anything in there.
No, but it's more of the, I want, but my mommy didn't give me money, right? You know what I'm saying? So it's, it's the same thing. Because we weren't allowed to have fast food in schools when I was growing up, right? We're talking years and years ago. But back then, going to McDonald's meant something, right? Going to a fast food actually had meaning. Now it's just, it's a survivor, right? It's not this hyped up thing anymore. It's not, ooh, we're going to McDonald's, it's, we're going to McDonald's, you know? None to really step it up, gee, is it a big deal anymore? So the times have really changed. So for somebody to walk in there with a sub from Subway or McDonald's or anything like that, um, those things are more likely to actually be eaten during that lunch than all the food I see wasted every single day. Some kids, they nitpick and they've, it's like, you're not gonna eat that? Like you gotta be hungry, you know? And that's just the way, either they don't like it or they're.
We're, we're perfectly fine if people want to bring stuff from home. Uh, because not a lot of people, but there are some people that actually don't like what we provide. Now, I, I've been to a different place, I actually think this is true, this is very much very relevant to me, but I think our food's.
It's not bad, for the most part, it's not.
It's tremendous. Um, but what we do have is that it is a situation where if the parents want to bring stuff, and there are certain things that we don't let you bring that are dangerous or, you know, uh, and we gotta be careful too, that it doesn't require a lot of preparation, that we can't heat up every single thing that you bring to school, you know, those kind of things. But outside of those restrictions, people can bring what they want to bring. We, again, we just ask for it to be in a, in a container so that it's not open uh, prior to the lunchtime about kids getting in.
Do any of your middle or high schools have maybe a microwave that students can utilize?
You know, I do believe that they do, but I'm not a hundred percent sure about that because I know we used to do that and most of our schools used to do that. And then it got to be a problem to where everybody was bringing so much stuff that kids were standing in line all the way through lunch trying to get to the microwave kind of thing. And so many of our schools, if not all of them, I'm not real sure about that particular one, but I think a lot of them, um, it's becoming more and more of a struggle to get stuff heated up and get it back to kids' time, you know, in the, in lunchtime that we have. Alright, so let me go back to your original piece. Your just, you were, your, your original question was about who sets the individual times for school?
And if there's a course of action that must be taken versus just somebody saying, hey, we're gonna change, change the time?
I think the short answer to you, without doing research, I have to look at it. But I think the short answer is, uh, as long as you go that prescribed number of hours. Uh, and you know, we can't go from seven o'clock to one o'clock kind of thing. But as long as it is that prescribed number of hours within reason and it matches up, a lot of times, we're talking to transportation to make sure they hit that spot. Now, I do know, the other part, probably started out going a little bit earlier, is that with the number of temperatures that we had to take and doing some different other things, we couldn't get that done. Is that with the number of temperatures that we had to take and doing some different other things, we couldn't get that done. In in the amount of time that we opened our doors before, so, but now that really shouldn't impact. The start of school, the start of school should have really been the same, it's just when they start letting kids in, I think. But let me find out and I'll call you back.
Okay. I appreciate, yeah, no, you're good. Have a good one, thank you. Oh. Maybe we'll get somewhere with that, um you know, a little bit of insight, because you know. Before this COVID thing, I would try to go a day or two days a week and eat lunch with my kids. And uh you know, eh I'd like to bring them something other than what they're eating at school. Um you know, I I grew up, I never liked bag lunches, um I just can't do the soggy bread and stuff like that. So um you know, trying to provide for my kids and if. I don't see there being that big of a deal of just bringing out. Uh you know, a sandwich from somewhere or a sub from somewhere, eh you know, it doesn't need to be cooked in your own house. Um and if it's got a wrapper on it or not, once you open that at the table, the kids sitting there, they all know it's a McDonald's hamburger. I mean, eh it's just a little ridiculous, um but you know. Can't let everybody, I guess, bring in food and they wouldn't sell none, right? And then that would be hurting on them, but there's a lot, a lot of food that gets wasted at the school. Um the kids just don't eat it, they nitpick it, they're too busy playing around, um i- it's cold, it's hard, it's. This, it's that, it's not that they're cooking it bad, it's just, it's the style of the food. Um eh kids these days are picky eaters, you know, so if they can get that ice cream and bag of chips. Um and eat that and and not eat the regular food, that's what they do. Um hey, I appreciate everybody watching, um please. Comment below if there's anything that you would uh like me to do different or anywhere you would like me to go or any concerns you have. With any facility that's uh government oriented. Um. Please subscribe, gotta get those up, um get the word out there, hey, I appreciate your time. And uh we are out from the Hammond County Department of Education, thank you.